Okay, broadcast is live.
Okay. It is 6:41, we are out of executive session.
Are the speakers on?
Hello, hello, is that better?
Yeah.
Susan Humbert. There we go, see, I got it.
I got it.
I got it, alright. Somebody's been messing with my chair again, Mr. Fredericks?
Not me. I'm innocent.
Every time I come in, there's a...
Where's the chair?
Where?
I feel like a little kid sitting at the garden table. Alright. It is 7:03. Monday, May 21st, 2018. Regular meeting for the City of Woodland Council. If I can get everyone to please silence your cellphones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Rip, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Rounds?
Here.
Councilmember Plaza?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Humbert?
Here.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Here.
Alright, all are accounted for and present this evening. Did, uh, Mr. Rip, did I should have requested Mr. Rip show up this evening? Sorry. You're gonna have to do it. Stand right here. Look at us. I'm sorry, I forgot to have Mr. Rip show up this evening. It is National Public Works Week, and I'm delighted to read this proclamation. So, whereas the public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of the understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on the facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments and materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, William A. Finn, Mayor of the City of Woodland, Washington, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through the 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week. In the City of Woodland, Washington, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. I am witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Woodland, Washington, to be affixed this 21st day of May, 2018. Here comes the photo. Yeah. I'm gonna step out, just a little bit. And thank you for all you do and your crew does every single day. They really are the face of the city, they're the ones that are out there. Although, we all have our own important roles, but they're the ones that are out there every single day and the ones that we recognize, and any time we have a problem, those are the ones we call upon. So, thank you for our beautiful quality of life. Thank you very much. I have, I have great people on my team. Alright. Oh, I forgot the papers.
Mr. Jackson, has everybody signed up this evening?
Okay. Alright, we've come to the portion of the agenda for Citizen Communications for Items Not on the Agenda. If you failed to sign up at the beginning of the meeting, now is your opportunity to step forward and speak. Alright, no takers. Now is your opportunity to speak for items on the agenda. For those in the gallery who failed to sign up at the beginning of the meeting, now is your opportunity. I'm really surprised Mrs. Johnson doesn't have anything to say.
I am, I am too.
But if you want to speak to it, now's your chance.
Oh, you can't speak later?
No.
Darling, Mrs. Johnson, how many meetings have you been to since you've lived here for the past seventy years? Is it a public hearing later?
Yeah.
Hold on a second, I may, I may have spoken out loud and have to apologize to you, stand by.
Oh geez.
How many meetings have you been to?
I don't see, now's your chance, there's no public hearing later.
I used a workshop.
Yeah. No, not Mr. Goddard. And, uh, this is a plan that actually, and I'll try to explain it to you, but it's a plan that actually Ed Orkett told me about. And he's already done a little bit of talking with the Department of Transportation on it, and they seem to like it. And, uh, the one part that I'll probably forget, so I'll say that first, is, I don't know if, when we put the sidewalks under the, and this is Exit 21, by the way. When we put the sidewalks under there, there were several of us that lobbied for only having sidewalks on one side of the road so that the road could be made wider, and that was a no-no at that time. So, but now, Ed has talked to the Department of Transportation, and there's a possibility of putting the sidewalks on the other side of the posts and putting a, um, wall. And then making the sidewalk level. So then we would have, could widen that street, both of the sidewalks, because the sidewalks would be inside of that, of the overpass.
Okay.
And so that's the part I would, yeah. Okay, first off...
Is it drawn on that map? Is there drawings on there or no? Okay.
What is drawn on this map is, but you know, here's this map, that I told him I wanted a big map of the area. Look at the area.
Map?
It's a big map, he gave you one of them.
Yeah.
Here, all of it, and you can describe, it looks like I can keep it open here.
But the first thing that we do is add, coming, going to Seattle, going north out of Portland, they would add a lane to the freeway. And on that lane, it would be a right turn only. And then we would have the regular lane. That would really help...
Towards Atlantic here? I'm looking at your arrows down there. Towards Atlantic, so the lane going through to Atlantic and then a right, or a, you said a left turn or right turn?
Well, you know, when you come off of the freeway now, going north, you can either go turn or go, you know, there's two lanes. On the on-ramp, you'd have three lanes also.
Gotcha, okay.
And, but the main thing is you would have another lane off the freeway, which would be an exit only, and then they would also have the lane that is currently an exit. So that would really stop the backup on the I-5. And this would go down, you know, almost a mile where they have this extra lane.
Okay.
Okay, that's the first part of it. The second part is as you go under the freeway, and you're going, and you wanna either, well, first off, then when you come under the freeway, you can, you can, you can go either into the, there'd be three lanes, so you'd have to widen the exit ramp too, by at least one lane. Okay. So now we have an issue of getting from one side of the freeway to the other. So when you're coming from the east side to the west side, there would, well, no, we're gonna go back, I wanna, we gotta have a road. So now, they're gonna, this would have another road that would take part of the exit that were the, on the west side, but part of the...
The on-ramp?
Yeah, the on-ramp, but what is the, the parking area?
Parking.
It would take a road that would be going, we'd add a lane to that road that would go right onto the exit, and it would exit further on down, you know, you could merge.
On-ramp.
But it, but the on-ramp would exit almost to 20. You know, I mean, you know, that you could get on it anywhere from that, so that you're not putting another lane in there and then bunching them together to get on to go I-5 south. This also would, it would be a free turn, you know, it'd be before the light. So you'd just go and, but then...
Coming out of downtown.
Coming out of downtown, and he says the best thing, it would, you could take all the traffic that is in the bottoms, they could go around the lake, come out there by the information center, get right on that ramp and go out. So they're not having to back up through downtown. Then, when you're going from the east side to the west side...
Just to show everybody at home.
Yeah. East side to the west side, they would, you know, we have the turning lane that goes with the, that goes onto I-5 south. The next lane could go either straight or turn, because you would have two entrances. So that would make, you know, right now, when you're going from one side of the freeway to the other, and if you want to turn or get in that one lane that's gonna turn, you can't even get in it. So this would add actually another lane that would turn onto I-5 south or go straight across. These are fixes that wouldn't interfere with the idea if we could ever get the Scott Street crossover thing, you know? I mean, it isn't something you'd have to change or anything. And it's not another, you know, another complete interchange, but it doubles or triples the capacity of what we currently have. Both going both ways. And especially, it really helps when you're coming from the north to get the, and see, that's the key about this, is it's a failed interchange and it's very unsafe the way it is. So there is impetus with the legislatures, legislators, and the legislature to fix that interchange. And just adding that lane on I-5 is huge. But on the other side, I really want the lane going south too, because that could take off some of the traffic that, you know, you've gotta, you can go straight or, you'd get a whole nother lane going onto I-5, and it, in today's term, it's a cheap fix.
It still has a million dollar price tag on it though.
Oh, yeah, it'll be a big price tag, but compared to anything else that anybody has looked at.
Yeah.
And then the fact that we could increase the width of the road going from one side to the other, you know, have more lanes, because we can take out the sidewalks and put the sidewalks under the, on the other side of those posts.
How does this factor into a roundabout? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, please, please, Mrs. Johnson. Um, so this, I believe that you and I had...
If you hadn't screwed up Exit 22, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about having to fix up 21.
That's right.
So...
Yes ma'am.
I did see a circle on the sheet, where the 1 is, and it got me a little concerned.
You know what that 1 is?
Thought maybe we were...
I couldn't draw.
A square?
I couldn't draw the turning lane. It's a laning.
I got it, yep, I had it, once it was in front of me, I got it.
So, this is your solution too? So we, we had added in a, a potential slip lane at 20 on Lake Shore, and I know that you were very pro-slip lane, just not in that location, and this seems like this is a better solution, in your mind?
Yes, in my mind, and in probably the legislature's mind, and in most of the people that do this thing.
But this is what prompted the conversation?
This is what prompted the conversation. I still haven't given up on the idea of a slip lane, kind of by Safeway, that would go to get some of that traffic out.
Okay.
But if we did this, we may not need that. And you can, you know, you gotta kind of prioritize, and, but just having that extra lane going south where it doesn't bunch it up, so it doesn't, you know, because it exits a lot, a lot further, and being able to go around horseshoe, not, you know, and then out. It's, uh, to me, it's a, it's a, I told Ed, he was gonna be here tonight, but he's gonna try to come on Wednesday when he can explain it more. He's very nervous about me explaining this.
What's Wednesday? What's Wednesday? What's happening Wednesday?
Well, I say we talked about having a meeting with some engineers with you.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, don't forget.
Yes ma'am, I'll need a reminder of what time that is.
I already have. But I'll leave this.
Yeah, please leave that with Travis, so we have it.
Question?
Mr. Fredericks has a question, if you're available.
Questions?
Mr. Fredericks, are you asking to alter the rules this evening and speak with the gallery?
Well, I guess, we went longer than five minutes, we probably should alter that.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Did you, I, I may have misunderstood your remarks when you said that this, did this get in front of WashDOT?
Ed has been talking to WashDOT about this, and he hasn't sold them on it. But, I mean, they haven't agreed, but they have found no red flags, is what is told me.
Okay.
There's no red flags on it.
So this, presumably this would be an option that would be explored...
We hope.
With the, with the study that is currently going on at Exit 21, is that...
So we're supposed to be meeting with them, with WashDOT, next month at some point. I don't believe that they've approached us yet for a date and time, but presenting some of the ideas for the traffic issues that we're, that we're having.
And that's one thing that, you know, Ed's head of the transportation community up in Olympia, so he's the big mucky-muck on stuff like this. And he had asked me to ask Will, and Will agreed that, when you guys go to WashDOT, that he'd be there with you.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, because this is...
Okay. I'll wait then for my other questions.
Okay.
Some of those arrows there, I'm wondering how much land is gonna be required where those arrows are coming out?
Most of it is all of theirs already.
All of theirs already, that's another...
It's, it's their right of way.
It's their right of way. And, it's, you know, if we take part of those, the only thing I didn't, you do take those really kind of pretty trees that have to go, that's, but you know, we can plant.
More trees.
More trees.
We are Tree City USA. We'll find a spot.
Excellent.
Okay. So more to come on that.
You know, that little triangle is to make it wider and, you know, and, but, just the idea of using the current interchange and be able to do all of this is amazing.
Absolutely. And it's a, it's a simple solution too, that we haven't thought of before. Uh, Ms. Coleman?
Um, I do want to share that what she brought forward for widening of Exit 21 was talked about, and I mean, WashDOT, that is one of the options that they're bringing forward.
Good.
In addition to the roundabouts, but that is one of the options that they are bringing forward.
She wasn't making a joke, she's being serious. I, I made the joke, but we know that we're not, we're gonna fight that.
They're gonna, they're gonna present a number of options for you guys to buy off on, and one of the options that I am aware of is talking about widening underneath that, which I believe is an option.
Absolutely.
Ed promised he would fight against any funding if they screwed it up with roundabouts, because he was very much opposed to the roundabouts down there. And he is saying, it's just proof is in the pudding that why we haven't improved the flow at all is a lot of it because of those roundabouts.
Absolutely.
Especially the one the city did, which is kind of a small one.
Had to get that in there, didn't you?
Yes.
Your five minutes is up.
Yeah.
Oh, Mrs. Johnson, I love you. No, no, I, I will. Since we, it's not breaking the rules, what do we do? We amend it. Since we informally amended the rules, now is your opportunity for anyone else in the gallery to step forward and speak for 20 minutes as well. Seeing no takers, moving on. Thank, thank you for that though, thank you for, for bringing the maps for Mr. Goddard, much appreciated, and I look forward to Wednesday. Alright, we've now come to the portion of the agenda for agenda approval.
Move to approve?
Moved by Councilmember Humbert, seconded by Councilmember Plaza. Will Clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Alright, agenda's been approved, moving on to reports of City Council. Any reports?
I have one.
Uh, Mr. Fredericks?
I was gone at the last meeting, but had the opportunity to do dinner at the VFW. I encourage folks to get out and do that, that was a really awesome event that was put on by the VFW. I encourage people to, to go and experience these types of things in our community, 'cause you shouldn't forget. And, uh, I was, I was somewhat disappointed that there weren't more people for something like that. So, I do know that the VFW has breakfasts often.
Second Saturday?
Of every month?
Of every month.
Yep, which typically don't work for me, that's why I went to the dinner.
And we appreciate that, and thank you very much, I was gonna bring that up as well. And Danforth Planters Day, we will be doing breakfast on Saturday morning and lunch on Sunday. Hot dogs and hamburgers and potato chips and pop and whatever else we decide to come to.
No membership needed?
No, it's open to the public.
That's great.
And the new flag receptacle there for flags, that was an awesome project.
And that was brought forward at, we did a, a thank you scouts on Sunday, and we gave him an award for that.
He'll be, he'll be getting recognized here, probably the next City Council meeting. So, thank you for the information that you sent on him, by the way. Okay, is that it, Mr. Fredericks?
That's all I have.
Any other reports of council? Okay. Moving on to reports of standing committees. Finance and General Government, Mr. Fredericks. And I've got, oh.
Can I add, can I just add one thing I forgot about?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so Memorial Day...
Oh, yes.
We're doing a...
I just sent it out.
Is that on here?
I don't, I just saw the, I just saw the posting here.
So Memorial Day, we will be doing a service on, by the old fire station, starting at 1:00. The speaker is, oh my goodness, I just forgot his name. Thank you, Terry Richards. So please come and join us, help remember the, our fallen soldiers. On Saturday, we're doing a poppy drive at Safeway from 9:00 to 4:00. Again, come get a poppy, help everybody remember what our veterans have done for us, that we live the way we live because of them. And then after the ceremony on Memorial Day, there'll be cake or, and cookies and coffee at the post. The post will be open to the public.
I did attend that event last year, and it was, it was very well done, very well done. I'm trying to remember the Colonel that spoke that day.
No, we tried, but they're still not doing, they're not spending the money on, to do a flyover. So, they do want in Portland, and if they can get, they'll try and come this way.
Alright. Thank you very much.
I did mention that, I did attend the Northwest Innovations Open House that they had last week, so, I was there.
Taking my thunder out.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm going to, I've got, yeah, I'm going to, okay. Alright, Mr. Fredericks, Finance and General Government.
Yes, we met last Monday, it was, we had quite the agenda. Uh, we talked about the gambling tax report from March and April, and it is in line with where we thought we would be for this year. The Finance Committee requested a, a report on eVerify. This was legislation that was passed, I want to say in 2014 or 2015. We just wanted to make sure that it was being complied with, and, uh, we are currently complying with that for contractors. And, uh, we actually, we asked for feedback as well. And, uh, we got that, so, the staff is supposed to be providing us feedback on that. Ending Fund Balance Summary Report from Funds. Everything is in line with where we're supposed to be this time of year, so that's looking good. We reviewed our L F One Long-Term Care Report. We did have an outside consultant look at this. They determined that the current long-term, long-term care policy is sufficient to cover the city's liabilities, so we are good there. We reviewed the janitorial contract. Bids were due on the 27th of April and brought to the Finance Committee. Uh, the Finance Committee requested some additional information. We want to look at hiring a part-time employee at under 70 hours per month, so no benefits are to be incurred. We are looking at getting in other, additional bids and looking at other options. We are looking to extend our current contract through June or July until action can be taken. Uh, on tonight's agenda for Consent Item D is Vision and Cash Management High-Speed Remittent Software Upgrade. This is just under $3,000, and this will be funded from Fund 304, which is the Equipment Acquisition Reserve, and we will look at providing some efficiency and cost savings. The Finance Committee referred this to council with a due-pass recommendation, and it is for your consideration this evening. We had some discussion about having, basically having a Employment Staffing Agreement in place in case we needed to hire temps. We have requested that, we wanted the attorney to maybe take a look at if there was a claim made for an injury on the job and some hold harmless language that's in there. So, the Finance Committee requested that additional information, comparison of more companies, and have that brought back to the Finance Committee. Ordinance Number 1402, Council Compensation, this is just a code cleanup. This is Action Item I on this evening's agenda. The Finance Committee referred this to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. Ordinance Number 1408, which is Verizon Franchis agreement. Discussion on the contract and competitors, we just had some discussion in there. And this will be brought forward for council at the next first meeting in June. The committee with, requested that this be brought to the council, and we're requesting a due-pass recommendation. Calhoun County Agreement with the Big Idea Fund for Sign Funding. That's Action Item G on this evening's agenda. This was also referred to council with a due-pass recommendation. Some old business that we've been working on, Humane Society Contract with Pete. He's met with some other cities and negotiating a multi-city agreement collectively, and there is a new director on staff. There's policy, special events, special use permits, street closures, and block parties. The status was provided, public works reviewed and commented, it has been forwarded to the community development for review and comments. This is pending July, August, back to the Finance Committee for consideration. Fee Resolution, all fees, still taking a look at that. The target date of completion is to have that for us at the next Finance Committee meeting in June, and brought to the full council for a workshop on the 18th. Also, with the new legislation on public works, art, not public works, Public Records Act, we had an update there, this will also be part of the workshop on the 18th and public hearing for July 2nd. There were a couple items that were added. Just a question for follow-up is on the scope of the project, if it's changed as far as the dog park goes. Is it, is it a smaller area? So we just wanted a report on that, and that is currently with the mayor and public works director. And, uh, we've got some upcoming items. Newspaper of bid, those dues, those bids are due on the 31st of May. We're set to award a bid at the 18th of June. Surplus sale, which is going to occur June or July with action. And then poster meter contract renewal, which is set for June action. And a website update, bids being sought and design ideas. Utility rate study, Pete reported that the RFP is about to be released. And then business license code update is pending. We adjourned the meeting at about 5:00 after 7:00, and our next meeting is scheduled for June 11th at 5:30 at City Hall. That's all I've got.
Questions for Mr. Fredericks? Alright, thank you, Mr. Fredericks. Moving on. Moving on. Let's get this right here. Let's think, I'm the mayor. So, there are two things that have been attached underneath my report, the Calhoun County landfill letter, and then also Calhoun County Mosquito Control District Report. I cannot remember his name for the life of me on the mosquito. Frank?
Jacob Beatty.
O, say it again?
I couldn't.
Oh, I thought you had it right. You sounded very confident. Frank, Frank O.
Yeah, there you go.
Who is our representing person for the Mosquito Control District stopped in last week or the week before, I can't remember, but I happened to be in City Hall and had a nice conversation with him. He provided, he wasn't sure what his role and responsibility was at the, being the liaison between the city and the Mosquito Control District, so it was nice that he came in. The report is attached. He was very, it's up there on the screen now, he was very impressed by the conversations that were happening at the Mosquito Control Board, and wanted to share that with us, so it was good. We had a very nice conversation, and I'm happy that he agreed to step up and be that liaison for us. And then, moving forward as well, any concerns that we have? He's going to be working with Ms. Coleman to take those issues back up to the Mosquito Control Board and vice versa. He's got his point of contact now as well, so, because Ms. Coleman walked in when I was having a conversation with him, so I was able to hook them up, so that's good. County landfill letter is attached, I don't have one in front of me here, but it should be attached. The majority of the cities within, or, no, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say the majority, we are the last ones within Calhoun County to respond to the landfill situation that the county has going on right now. A few years back, they purchased a piece of land up near Spirit Lake, and which is controlled by the county. I personally have been approached by both sides of this, by waste, is it Waste Control, Waste Management?
Waste Control.
Waste Control, a few months back, and then also, a couple weeks ago, I was also approached by the folks that are proposing taking over management of the landfill, which is a private organization. All the cities, with the exception of the city of Woodland, have responded back to the commissioners with a letter, please slow down, basically, please slow down, and use the process that's been set forward by a committee to make sure that this is the right direction for the county to go in with, going into private management. We're not suggesting we say no to this right now, or take a position yes or no, but join the other cities within the county and say, please take a step back and allow the process to work. These are conversations that we're going to be having later on this evening with our own way of doing business, but if there's a process in place, it needs to be used. So, I have drafted a letter, which is somewhat of a template compared to the other cities, that I plan on sending up, asking them to use that process to make sure the voice of the people are heard, and all avenues have been explored, and all answers have been answered. So, if council would like to join me in sending this letter, we can certainly discuss that. Similar to the Northwest Innovations that I absolutely support, a letter that I brought forward about a year ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, I absolutely support that project, I support moving forward with that project, and I'll just get on my soapbox real quick here. I believe the state has done a horrible disservice to the company and to the citizens around us. When we talk about using process, I don't think that they did it effectively at all. But, that's my opinion. So, we did have discussion, when I brought that letter forward, that there were some on council that did not support that project, but it was an opportunity to say, hey, as the mayor, I'm planning on sending this letter with my name on it. If you would like to join me, council members, that would be great too, and if you don't, that's fine, but this is what I'm planning on doing. So, if you, I would like to have that discussion with you now, if you would like, and talk about it for those that have read it.
For the landfills?
Yes.
You were talking about?
Landfill.
Mr. Boyce and I attended the Regional Information Forum last Friday, then sponsored by the COG, and all the cities, the county, and a lot of the bigger entities were there. So, we kind of heard both sides of it, and I totally agree, we need to slow down. It hasn't gone to the SWAC board yet, it really needs to go through them. There is a process to do this, and I understand they don't want government involved in this, but right now, that's what's working really good for us, and that landfill is going to last another 80 to 100 years, as is. If they sell it and they take over, they're going to start bringing new companies in, and we'll be lucky if it lasts 40 years, and then what are we going to do? So, we need to slow down. If it's a good thing now, it's going to be a good thing down the road when all of the proper things have happened. My opinion.
Mr. Fredericks?
I agree with Councilmember Humbert. When I see that, it sounds to me that there's a process in place that has not been followed.
Correct.
That's the way I read this. So, I would, I think it would be appropriate for us to have our names signed on here as well. And I will, if the chair would accept a motion, I would make that motion to have this come from council after we've had, unless there's further discussion, and we can have further discussion if the motion is seconded.
I don't know if it's something that anybody is wanting, but both sides said that they would come to a council meeting or a workshop if we wanted to hear both sides of the story.
Did you make a motion?
I did.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Fredericks to discuss the letter at hand, County landfill letter, seconded by Councilmember Chapman.
Not to, let me be clear on the motion. The motion is to have council adopt this with the mayor, and I would prefer that it goes through the process before it comes to us to look at.
Okay.
But, I guess I'll stop my motion, and this is just to sign on with you.
Second, Dan.
By Chapman. Okay. Mr. Fredericks, is that on?
I have no discussion on it, no. I appreciate you bringing it forward, because I think it's important.
Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, I agree, it's a very important thing, and I think we all should be backing one another, this is, we are supporting one another up here.
Further discussion? All right, will the clerk please take the vote on adopting the letter? Maybe you can say your motion again here, since it's laid out in front of me.
Does the clerk have the motion?
I'm going to have council sign the letter and adopt the letter with mayor.
Okay, will clerk please take the vote?
Sounds good.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
All right, motion is passed. We will fix that and get that out. Thank you very much. Okay, let's see, what else do I have here? Oh, Mr. Boyce is not with us this evening. He's had a family situation arise, he had to travel, so he will be gone, I believe, through, at least through the week until Friday, hopefully back in the office on Monday, but if not, understand, Monday's a holiday, so hopefully by Tuesday, but please keep Mr. Boyce and his family in your thoughts over the next week. They've experienced a horrible tragedy, and just keep them in your thoughts. I have also attended the Boy Scouts Eagle Promotion.
Yeah.
Did I say it wrong? Oh, here it is. Eagle Scout, or, I'm sorry, Eagle Court of Honor by Troop 531 on Saturday. First time I've actually attended, I've been invited before. When I came, and I was not prepared with my remarks when I walked in, I thought I was going to get there and smoke and joke like I usually do, called the young man forward and give him his recognition from the city and myself, and there was actually quite a number of people there. I was a little blown away and a little nervous when I got up there, so I don't think that I conveyed how appreciative I am of the Boy Scouts and what they do for our community. Goes back to what Mr. Fredericks said about the VFW, and there is just this, there is a demographic of people within our community that are really stepping up every single day out there, and they are creating, are creating an environment for our children to grow and learn and become awesome people. And I think that by coming forward to this event, and I know you were there with Mr. Malloy as well, and recognizing them and driving out home that what they're doing is right, what they're learning is awesome, and the people that are out there guiding them are just as awesome, and I wish that I could have said that on Saturday.
It's okay, they got that.
But I didn't, because it takes an entire team of people to raise, to raise the children of our community, and they're doing a tremendous job with it. So, there is going to be another recognition, probably at the next council meeting, with the information that you gave me from the young man that did his Eagle Scout project with the Flag Depository, I think, is that what we're calling it?
Yes.
Wonderful job on that as well. So, I think it's important that we, as a city, recognize the service that is being given back to us with no expectation, which I think is fantastic.
No expectations, and the Boy Scouts that did the park at the port.
Absolutely, they were there as well.
Yes, they were.
Just wonderful commitment to service, like many of you. That's commitment to service.
Wonderful thing, Mr. Trigard, who is their scout leader, the head leader, this is our first that has actually eagled out, but he has five more young men who are going to eagle out within the next couple, three months. They're working on their projects, they're finishing up their, and they have to have this done before they're 18. I think that has, that says a lot. That's pretty amazing for our small town to have that many Eagle Scouts.
I think I've given four recognitions since I've been, maybe five, since I've been here to them being promoted to, I would call it a promotion, to that level, and that I'm not surprised, but we all benefit from it.
Yes.
We're all the end user and the receiver of their great work, so I can't say enough good things for those folks, so, thank you, and thank you through VFW and the presentation of the flag that happened, and I don't know that gentleman's name, that gave the flag that flew over the Capitol, which was awesome as well. The whole thing was just top-notch, it was fantastic, it was a good time. I'll stop talking. Oh, well, I still got a few more things to check about. Northwest Innovations went to, I don't know what we would call that, an open house, I think? Would you call that?
Yes, it was an open house.
Open house, very well done. Again, there at Northwest Innovation Works, there at the Port of Palama, thankful I was invited, completely support the project, but that's, again, that's my own personal stance on that, and I think what they're going to provide to our area is going to be absolutely phenomenal if we can just get the state to stick to the rules and playing fairly. And VFW, again, does wonderful things. I'm sorry, I haven't been able to get down there for breakfast, it's hard, but I will be there on Monday.
Thank you.
I'll be there on Monday at 1:00.
Thank you.
Questions for me? Rambling on tonight, all right, and Mr. Boyce's report, first quarter 2018 department reports are, they're not attached.
They are.
Okay.
Still in progress.
Okay, so you should be receiving those at the next meeting. Liquor licenses for Las Pepe's, transportation planning info on tomorrow at the chamber at noon, I'm assuming Mr. Goddard is presenting, okay? And then on Wednesday, transportation planning, open house and public meeting at noon and 7:00 PM here in the council chambers to take in public testimony and comment, similar to what we received from Mrs. Johnson this evening, to make sure that all avenues have been explored and thoughts have been given from our community. On June 4th, we'll be having executive session at 6:00 PM followed by council candidate interviews. The way that's going to happen is we'll start one last time, and any questions during that executive session, and any concerns or anything like that, we'll come out here and you will interview the four candidates during the meeting, and then we will retreat to another executive session to hash it out, so the six of you can hash it out and talk about it and discuss qualifications, before coming back and taking action on who to appoint for the vacated position. On June 11th, Planning Commission, public hearing on wireless communication facility code, which will be here in council chambers, and on the 18th, a workshop for the fee resolution, and on July 2nd, public hearing on fees and public records requests. Questions? Trying to think if there's anything else that, we've got a lot going on right now, we're lining up all our ducks, so we're doing good. All right? Okay, moving on. We're now at the portion of the agenda for consent items.
Can I remove E and F, please?
Oh, dang it. Can we go back for a second? I've had start a few items that I wanted to talk about.
Sure.
Before you guys go into your discussion, when I can't talk anymore. Consent item C, the dates are wrong, for the field day at Scott Hill Park with the Ham Radio Club, it's actually the 22nd, the 23rd, and the 24th. Got that corrected. I would like to, Chief Jackson, did you have public safety committee meeting this evening?
We did.
And has consent item E, special event closure for Willow Street, been discussed already during committee?
It has.
And what was the outcome of that?
There were some recommendations for us to follow on some future events, a few recommendations to the folks hosting the event, and beyond that, it was approved, given the stipulations we discussed.
Okay, out of committee? It's been approved out of committee?
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you. And I'd like to speak to action, thank you, Chief Jackson. I don't think I ever got the closed loop on that, so that's why I asked.
Yeah, the committee meeting was tonight, so unless any of the committee members were to add anything to that.
I just think after ideas and thoughts and were presented and discussed, we kind of come down to a...
Agreement.
Agreement and conclusion of...
And that is something that we're working on with policy, so...
Yes.
That should be coming forward as well.
Okay.
Okay. Action item G, authorized mayor to sign agreement with Calhoun County for partial funding for signed project related to tourism. This action item is grant money that the business chamber had obtained for advertising on State Route 503. One of the stipulations, though, is the money has to be ran through the city, so that's, so we're asking to council to accept that money so we can get that over to the chamber to be spent on signage, and that's all that I have. Now, we've moved to Mr. Fredericks. You said you wanted to pull something.
I just want to pull F now. See, that saved us.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve the consent items A through E.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks to approve A, B, C, D, and E, seconded by Councilmember Humbert. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
All right. Consent item F, authorized mayor to sign CDBG grant, acceptance and related documents for 2018 sidewalk and ADA ramp project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks, seconded by Councilmember Humbert. Councilmember Fredericks?
Ms. Coleman, can you report on this a little bit? This is a win, I want you to...
Sell it.
Rally.
Rally, here's your chance.
You did the full dollar.
That doesn't matter.
So, we are, so, we'll just stop here, so I give you the right dollar amounts. So, we originally submitted for grand dollars, I believe they were 170,000. They came back to us and said that they gave us 84,000, and then I reported at that council meeting when we accepted the 84,000, which is about half, a little over half of what we did, that there would be maybe additional dollars that could come forward from the state, they weren't sure what those dollar amounts were. They were able to give us 24,000 additional dollars to add to the CDBG fund, so thus we're receiving 108,000, which still is over half of what we asked for, and so we'll be able to do more work for the project that we listed in at 100, I think it was 174,000. I apologize, I don't know that.
171,6.
I thought it was 171,7.
Okay, I was pretty close. 171, so, we're at 108, so I'm short 60,000 about, so, but we will be able to get quite a bit done, I think, based on that, and I'll do my best to stretch the dollars within the city to see what I can get done for 108,000 and try to woo you.
Well, provided this does get accepted tonight, which I'm sure it will, I hope to hear more, I hope to hear more about this later, because this is a huge win that we should be celebrating, so...
Yes.
Thank you for submitting these, because it worked.
Well, I, may I talk about my presentation today?
Let's wait, let's wait. We'll, I'll find a spot here for you, yeah. But I would like to say, if I could jump in, Mr. Fredericks, for a moment, without debating. Ms. Coleman has actually taken even a further step, or is planning on taking a further step with this consent item F, and I'm going to share that with what you shared with me. We have projects listed for 171,6, but you're going to break those out in case they do end up at the end. If you could speak to that, please, because that is also another win on top of this.
So, what happens sometimes at the end, at the end of the year, when, so, these funds have to be spent by next year, and so what sometimes happens is projects come forward and the dollars don't get spent from other municipalities, and so at the end of the year, CDBG scrambles to try to find projects to spend the funds on so they can receive those dollars from the upcoming years, so spending capital dollars, receiving the same amount of capital, you know how that works in American, American. So, what I'd like to do is, I want to have our project ready to go phase, I'll call it option 1, 2, 3, and 4, so we put this out to bid as option 1, 2, and 3, with option So we put this out to bid as option 1, 2, and 3, with option 1 and 2 spending up to about 110,000, see where we can go with 110. Then option 3, knowing that it should exceed the 110,000, but will go up to 170,000. So at the end of the year, if not further. So at the end of the year, if the CDVG comes back and says, hey, you know, we have 100,000 dollars we need to spend or 200,000 dollars, we're saying we're ready to go. We have the bid, we've put out the bid, this is an option in our bid, and now we can accept those dollars. And then they just have to vote on it at that meeting in order to allow us to spend it. And sometimes cities are prepared to do that, and sometimes cities are not. So my goal is to be prepared in case there are additional funds at the end of the year where another municipality was unfortunately not able to use those funds or have their budget in budget that we can actually utilize in those times.
Planning for the future. I love it.
Planning for the future.
Love it. Okay. Councilmember Humbert?
I just want to thank Tracy. This is amazing. I mean, it's thrilling to get all this stuff done, to talk about it, and then to actually see it come to fruition. Thank you.
There's no construction done yet, but I'm going to do my best.
I know.
Like I said, we'll see where we go with 100,000 dollars, so...
It'll happen.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? All right. Will the clerk please take the vote on action item F? Oh, I'm sorry. Consent item F.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
All right. Consent item F has passed. Moving on to action item G, authorized mayor to sign agreement with Calitz County for partial funding for signed project related to tourism.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Humbert. Seconded by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Humbert?
And this was big idea money that we... It was our share of the big idea money. We presented the signs that we wanted to do, and now they're giving the money back, but it has to be a pass-through through the city. So I encourage a yes vote.
Councilmember Rounds?
I agree also. Otherwise, those funds could go away, so we need to get them as soon as we can.
Okay. Further discussion? Will the clerk please take the vote on action item G?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to action item I, ordinance number 1402, council compensation amending Woodland Municipal Code 2.04.010, first reading.
Move adoption of ordinance number 1402.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks. Seconded by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Fredericks?
This is just cleaning up the code.
Councilmember Rounds?
Agreed.
Further discussion? Will the clerk please take the vote on action item I, ordinance number 1402, first reading?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
All right. Action item I has passed. I would like to recess for five minutes, 7:56, before moving into a Transportation Benefit District Board meeting. All right. Do you know what you're going to do?
I'm just going to call the meeting order and then... For a new chair and vice chair, as those people are no longer with us. So accepting nominations for vice chair. God, don't everybody jump at once.
(laughing). I nominate Janice Graham for vice chair.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Is that how that works?
Yes. Okay. So all in favor of Janice Graham being our vice chair, and we do signify by saying yes? Is that legal? Okay, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And nominations for our new chair?
I nominate Susan.
No, I'm secretary. I can't do that.
Second.
I'm the boss here. It doesn't happen. I nominate Carl.
You asked for nominations. Second that one.
I nominate Carl.
Second.
Okay? Is everybody okay with that? Okay, Carl has been nominated and seconded for chair. All in favor, vote signify yes.
Signify yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome, Carl. You are new chair.
You're in charge.
You're now running the meeting.
And so you're now running the meeting, so we'll open it up to public comment.
Hand them the stick.
Oh, I'll go first, I guess.
In case I get on the line.
Hi, hello. Will Finn, 178 Marty Loop with them in Washington. I'm your mayor. I wanted to speak this evening for the Transportation Benefit District. I noticed that on the agenda coming forward that there's a workshop for possible ballot measures, and I'm hoping that the Transportation Benefit District will discuss possible funding. And I noticed that it's on here for action this evening. I know from my research that the Transportation Benefit District has two options for... Well, there's actually multiple options, but ones that have been discussed by this board previously. Number one has been a car tab fee, an amount of $20 for all residents within inside the city limits of Woodland. I want it known on the record once again, I do not support that. I don't believe that the revenue generated by a car tab fee would support the number of projects that the city of Woodland has. I know also, historically, the Transportation Benefit District has moved forward with a 2/10ths of 1% sales tax increase to the voters, which was voted down narrowly both times, which would generate approximately $260,000 to $270,000 into the road and maintenance fund or transportation projects within the city. I am in favor of either way, if you choose to go to the voters again with that. But also, it's entirely up to you folks, obviously, to decide whether or not you want to move forward with that ballot measure. But I want it known that I do not support the car tab tax or fee that is associated with that. Also, on your action item this evening is Transportation Benefit District assumption of powers into the city council. I believe most of you have probably received that information from staff suggesting that we would no longer have to have these meetings, these awkward where the chair steps down and Transportation Benefit District Board then takes over, which are the same numbers of the council. That action would allow city council to assume those powers and vote as normal, and the meetings would be ran as they were previously this evening. So I just want that to be known. Thank you. Anyone else?
Anything else to be brought before this?
Yeah, follow the agenda, Carl. It's going to be...
Excuse me. Can I make a comment? Minutes of the May 15, 2017, also not in the... So if you wanted to pass the... We do not have any at that time, so...
So can I have a motion?
We've got to have a first. Wait a minute.
Okay.
Please have been published on the website. It's the same council meeting that we made with...
Move to approve the minutes as presented, the May 15, 2017 minutes as presented.
I'll second it. Moved by Councilmember Humbert and seconded by Councilmember Round.
Discussion?
Okay, discussion.
Is it typical that we would... I can't remember yesterday at noon, let alone what happened in May 15 of 2017, but I appreciate the notes. Is it standard to only... To approve the minutes of the TBD only at TBD meetings?
Yeah.
And that's what the second item was, this assumption of powers, which would allow us to do this more frequently, to approve the minutes at least.
Yes.
So, okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Secretary, please take the vote.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
I was called out to run the meeting from the gallery. I know. I was trying to get...
And the minutes are approved?
So we're able to have some discussion on this assumption of... Assumption of powers? Is that what we're going to be discussing next?
Yeah, that's... That's the next... I'm sorry. This actually works out. We do it.
So, may I interject? So the list of the other two items, so TBD assumption of powers into the city council, provided the MRSB articles, and then also gave you some information on the... So if those are listed as action, if the organ decides they want it to take action, or they could just... They're listed as action if you didn't want to make the motion.
Okay. Anyone have any discussion?
I do. It shouldn't be a surprise. What would be the appropriate way to complete this process? Because I don't have approved language in front of me tonight to make this change.
For the assumption of the powers of TBD by the city council?
Correct.
I don't know.
So the county legislative or the city or county legislative authority could pass the resolution ordinance indicating retention, hold a public hearing on proposed assumption of rights, powers, functions, and obligations to the TBD and set the time and place of the hearing. Ordinance or resolution must be published according to the requirements in Section 302, RCW. And at the hearing, the legislative authority must hear all protests and objections of the proposed assumption. And after the hearing, they can determine the best public interest and take action.
And this is a public hearing on that?
So this is not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not?
It's not advertised as a public hearing.
Okay.
It's just to start the process. So if the county or the organ made the motion to set the public hearing date, then we would have time to give at least 10 or 15 days notice to the public, and then we would set another TBD voting and have that resolution or ordinance available at that date. Possible action.
So can I have a motion to set the ball rolling?
I don't know. There may be further discussion.
Hold on a minute.
I don't know.
Do we get it seconded for the discussion or...
I can certainly make a motion, but I don't know how... I have a motion that I'd like to make. If the chair will accept it, I will request that staff prepare a resolution and set a public hearing for the assumption of powers of the Transportation Benefit District into the city council.
Second.
And set a public...
And set a public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Mr. Frederick made a motion of setting the ball rolling to council for staff to make the ball rolling so we can have... Just go towards council.
I think that was it. Because I was looking in there, the requirements, you have the authority to do it, you voted to do so. But I think what Pete wanted to know is whether to have your... Whether it has the authorization to move forward. Pete comes back, I'll talk to him. And I'm not sure... Because the TBD is a separate entity, so I just need to make sure that we do it correctly.
Right. I think the desire is... Well, I'll say my desire is to move that into a meeting that flows a little bit better. I don't really like this whole idea that we have to have a separate meeting, that this would all be then done by the council.
Right. And that's part of the assumption that normally when a TBD is set up, it is a separate entity. So and there's lots of situations in government where that occurs where you have separate minutes, even though it's the same people that meet routinely for other functions. And I just don't know the details for how you disestablish this entity.
Right. So presumably, that resolution describing that process and the public hearing would be through this TBD process. It would be... It wouldn't be at the council where we'd be hearing this. This would...
Right. Now, we might need to have another TBD meeting in order to formally do whatever we need to do. If perchance, if just the vote tonight is sufficient, then we can see what, you know, what ministerial acts need to be done. But if we need to, we'll schedule another TBD meeting if there's something else that if there's something else that you'll have to do formally to, to absorb the powers by the city council.
So does staff understand the intent of this board? And, uh, what next steps should be based upon the motion that has been made?
I mean, my, my, my understanding is basically to dissolve or Transportation Benefit District, absorb it into the council, is that correct?
Following the appropriate process?
Of course, exactly, and that's what we have to make sure.
So the motion is to hold the ball hearing. You said that the TBD order bring the Transit Benefit District into the council. Did you understand?
Sure, I mean, I mean, that, that, I mean, my understanding is you want to move forward.
Correct. Yes, yes.
And, and if we don't need another TBD meeting, if the council can do it, we'll do it that way. But if there has to be another meeting, we'll need, um, and continue this.
And let's have an agenda, and the things that we need to do.
So do we need to vote on this? For you guys, yeah?
Yes, yes.
If there's no further discussion?
There's no further discussion.
No further discussion?
My assumption would be is if you're going to dissolve the board, however, the board would have to dissolve the board. It wouldn't be the council.
I'm not, I mean, what you're doing is, is directing staff to proceed, but looking at what has to be done, and we will come back with the plan.
Sounds like the intent of the motion is understood by staff.
Further discussion? Can a clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
So it is passed to go forward with the staff to... To resolve and absorb this to the next step. TBD with council. Now, discuss, uh, the TBD funding?
Well, I have to agree with... The mayor that has stepped down.
Can the motion postpone?
You can't vote me off the island.
I can. That, I, I'm not...
We just put you in a bold, sentient way.
That I'm not in favor of car tabs myself either, so...
Can I, I don't even know who to ask, but do we, do we need to do that tonight? Or do we need to wait till we do the assumption and make sure that we're doing this the correct way? That maybe we need to do this as part of council rather than as our own entity?
Like I said, the, the council, I mean, the TBD has indicated that they wish to terminate the entity and absorb it into the council. And I don't know if that vote in itself is sufficient to do. And so we just need to make sure. If, if it is, then you're done. But then, if it's done, then as a council, you can discuss whatever you wish to discuss.
So perhaps we should postpone talking about the funding until we know what's happening?
Yeah, that's what I was...
So the only, the only deadline that I know of is if you wanted to get something on ballot, the product would get to the auditor.
That's what I wanted to know.
So you're going to have, I mean, it's probably in July in order for that to occur.
Okay.
So, uh...
Mr. Fredericks?
So I guess my question would be is, uh... I think we did a workshop or a, a council retreat not too long ago, and there was some direction that was given to staff, and as this, this group meant. And I don't recall, I, I, again, I can't remember yesterday at noon, let alone what we did three or four months ago, but I'm sure there's notes somewhere. But I do remember transportation as being one of those items that were discussed. I think it would be important to have an understanding of where we're at with those. I would say that, um, trying to adopt anything that is transportation-related and have it go through the appropriate process of public testimony, I think, is a stretch for this year. And I, I wouldn't be supportive of adding anything, uh, to move forward with, suggesting that we put some funds to it until there's a process in place that we could go to the folks with. Because as it stands right now, we've got a lot of legwork that needs to be done before we ever even consider, um, doing that, as far as I'm concerned. So, yeah, I'm nowhere near supportive of, uh, the TBD funding component at this point.
And I agree. That's why I suggest we postpone the funding until we have a better understanding of how we're all going to work together and make this happen appropriately, not kind of...
So I have a question, uh, postpone TBD funding action items?
I don't...
Or do we need to do a...
I don't think it requires one.
I think we need to require them.
Unless staff feels like they don't have direction.
So we don't need a, a vote or a...
Come back with an agenda. A meeting goes for the TBD. Also...
Move to adjourn the TBD meeting?
Second.
All in favor of adjourn the TBD meeting?
Aye.
Disagree?
How long?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Exercise. I have placed in front of you the, the exercise that was done during a recent department head meeting, uh, with, uh, staff and myself. And I'm going to go through the same exercise with council this evening. Uh, we've, the word "process" has come up quite a bit this evening, and this is what we're looking for. We're looking for the process, um, so we can all be committed to the same, uh, train tracks, if you want to look at it that way. Um, because sometimes, there are some members that, that feel that we should go one way, and staff and myself feel we should go another, but maybe there's an agreement that we missed a step somewhere. So this is an attempt to not miss those steps, so... Let me, let me get, get my boards here. I don't know where to place these here. I guess we'll just place them right here. The camera's not going to be able to see, sorry folks, hold on. What?
I've got it right here.
Well, we're going to, we're going to do it different. Just want to make sure. And we've, we've got an example on that flowchart already for, um... Can everybody see right here?
Yeah.
Everybody good? I need a pen though. Got a sharpie or something here? All right. So, here's the task, right? Mr. Fredericks is so, he's, he's standing by on what's going to happen here. So we have our concept. Oh, forgot. We have our concept, right? And at the end, we're going to have the, or, or a project, whatever it may be. You put whatever you want into this box, okay? This is the idea. And right here... Complete. Okay. So, the question is, how do we get from one end of the board to the other? We've kind of come up with our idea on what we thought it should be. Um, if we start with the concept, we're going to probably start it off at a department head meeting. So we're going to follow those tracks down. And from that department head meeting, we'll decide as a group, or through myself, or the department, uh, head, staff member, whether or not we're going to follow through with the idea. As we can see here, we've got an idea that Ms. Coleman's going to buy bleachers for the park, okay? So, Ms. Coleman brings the idea to department head meeting and says, hey, I want to buy bleachers for the park. It's not in the budget, but I think I can find the money. How are we going to get there? So we've got our bleachers. We've gone to a department head meeting. What do you, what do you think the next step should be, council, from there? We all agree with it inside city hall and said, yes, we believe, Ms. Coleman, you should buy bleachers for the park. What step do you think we need to take next?
So because it's for the park, it probably really needs to go to the park board with explanation of how it's going to happen, and when it's going to happen, and what she wants.
Okay. That, that should be the first stop?
Park board.
Okay. Any other ideas?
Just bleachers, give her the money, tell her to buy bleachers.
But it wasn't budgeting?
Oh.
So we've gone through the budget process already, and this is something that's simple. Trying to use an easy, so...
Find a way to come up with funds.
Okay. So, what are you suggesting? It should go to finance committee?
Finance committee.
Should it go to park board?
But, but wait.
This is the discussion part, go ahead.
This, it's the park board. The park board has to say, yeah, it's okay if we do this, then we go find the money. Because if the park board says, no, we don't want that, that's not... Because that's why we set the park board up, correct?
Correct. Or we can also use Mr. Plaza's idea too, if this wasn't bleachers, then maybe it's just a purchase of a new vehicle for city hall.
And then it, because, so it's going to be different for every project.
Okay. So it's fair to say it's going to go to another entity, right?
Okay.
Whether it be the board? Or a committee? Right? Okay, so that would be the steps. So it's gone there for discussion. What are your expectations when it comes out of there?
Whether they, they want us to go ahead with it or not?
Okay.
What's, what's going to happen? When is going to happen? How it's going to be financed? Who's going to be in charge of it?
What, with who, what, when, and where?
Yeah.
So, what I'm hearing is the plan.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. So that plan might indicate going to another committee. Correct? Okay, so, maybe we went to the park board, park board now kicks it over to the finance committee or general government. So from there, the plan, we're going back to committee again. One thing that I hear all the time though is, when, when does the community get an opportunity to voice their opinion on whether or not we buy bleachers? Or are we buying it through city hall?
At the night it's on the agenda for the first time without following... I'm not trying to be...
No, this is, this is your opportunity to choose. Fire away.
The same night it's been presented to us?
That's what you're suggesting should happen?
No.
That's, that's why we're doing this exercise, so that doesn't happen.
Okay.
That, that's why we're, that's why we're doing this, so that we're not coming to you saying, here you go, and we get the...
Depends on what the concept is.
Okay.
Who created the concept.
Okay.
Because you, and you're, what you've presented here in my mind is a concept that can only be distributed through a staff meeting, through staff.
Not always. Not, well, that's just an example.
Okay, sorry.
That's just an example.
So a concept can start with any member...
Member of the public, step before. I'd like you to look at, uh, the fee schedule for snowbirds.
Golf carts.
Golf carts. Example. Great, somebody says, oh, I want to do golf carts. Where should that first start? Concept, right? It should probably go to a committee somewhere for discussion.
Correct.
Or kick down the staff.
No, I think it needs to go to committee for discussion.
So let me, I'm just going to ask the question, I'm not trying to be difficult.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
We've had folks come here with a concept that gets rushed through the process without necessarily, maybe not even getting any buy-in from the folks.
Okay.
And so we rush a project through because one person wants it.
Okay. Is this rushing it through?
Not if that, that process is followed.
Okay. So this is where we are then?
Yes.
This is the, when we're done with this tonight, we're going to... I've, I've got my process, and hopefully, when we're done with your process, they'll kind of match up, and we'll see where we are. And maybe make a few changes.
So depending on what it is, because that's going to make a big difference, what that project is, that, but, so we, we now know who, what, where, when, and why. Now we bring it to us.
Back to, do you want it to go back to council, or you want it to go back to the committee?
I want it to go back to council.
Okay.
Council says, yes, we're interested, yes, we like the way where you're getting the money, yes, we like when you're going to do it. And then we do a public...
Okay, so that's an easy one. If we get, if we get rid of this one, right? That would be easy. We're going to buy some bleachers. It went to the park board, it went to the committee, wherever it needed to go. We found the money, we have the plan, this is what we're going to do, this is when we're going to execute it. It's now come to council, and now you're having discussion, and the community has an opportunity to step forward to the podium and say, hey, I don't think you should buy bleachers. Or, yes, I, I agree with the plan. Is that fair? That's a simple, that's a simple concept.
For that simple concept, yes, but I can't think of others
No.
Where there needs to be another box.
So this is, this is the easy route. Okay, but this is the easy route for something easy.
Right, yes.
Okay, what's take a more difficult concept? Golf carts.
No, how about...
No, give me something.
The establishment of a new park.
Establishment of a new park? Okay. So we've got our concept?
Yep.
Okay, so I've got my internal process that we're using similar before we get to the committee level, right? Okay. Establishment of a new park. Where do you think it needs to travel to first step? Should it start at the board and the committee level?
Well, it'd have to go to the park board, establishing a new park.
Okay, so we're going to take it up to the board. And then from the board, it's probably going to go to general, general, committee, general...
I go to general government and finance to make sure that there's money
Okay.
Appropriate for a new park.
Okay, so we, we, okay, so we're there. So the plan gets kicked out with a plan. After that, I would assume. Or it doesn't go anywhere.
Or doesn't go anywhere.
We're going to assume it's going somewhere. Okay, so we can finish the flipper.
So it's here? If the concept came from the public, they want the board, we want this process, we might go to Tracy, hey Tracy, we got... Public wants a new park, we have a place to put it?
Well, it's going to, it's going to end up here first. It's going to end up here with the committee. That's going to be a question that's going to come out of committee. Okay? So from here, this is more difficult and not so easy. Where does it need to go? Do we go to a plan?
Maybe.
Okay, so...
So far, you, once you get to council...
That, that should be...
You're still good at council.
So we're here.
Yes.
Okay. What do you want it to look like when it comes to council? Because this to me says we're ready to move forward, but we've missed everything in between.
Yeah, I was going to say, they have to talk to Tracy.
Okay, so it's gone to the committee, we've got a plan. Okay, after the plan, where's it going to go? Going to go back down to committee? Going to go to committee?
I'd say committee, I guess.
Okay. Committee now has the plan. This is a new park establishment. We're creating something new for the city. Maybe we should get the community buyout? Okay? So what do you want?
But wait.
Okay.
So now we say, we want a new park.
We've got the money.
So, so we did do that piece of it?
Yeah, we got that piece, we're coming down here.
Okay.
It's worth it. We did take it straight to council.
I thought you went from there to there.
No, we're down here now. We've gone back to committee.
So we have a plan. We know who, we know when, we know where, we know why, we know where the money's coming from.
We have our options.
There we go.
Okay.
How do we know we want a park?
Okay, so what are we going to do?
I mean, someone came up with a concept, but how do we know that...
Everybody buys on that.
That folks are interested in that concept?
Okay.
Because it seems like we went to the board and the committee. Nothing told us that we needed... There was no...
Okay.
There was really nothing there to say, hey, let's take this to committee.
Yeah, so the concept, okay, well, I'm going to walk through that statement. We start with our concept, it's gone to the board, committee, or, or it's gone to a board or a public. Since we're talking about a park, it's going to go to the park board. There's opportunities for folks to step up and speak to it. We've now got the plan, it's come back down to the board.
So now...
Community has another opportunity to step forward and speak to it, right? Okay. Not everybody knows that they, there's meetings, or that they can make a meeting. Right? So, how are we going to get a public testimony on this and get the buyout? Where's it going to go? It's got to go somewhere else.
To an open house, possibly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for participating, Mr. Fredericks. Open house. And during that open house, we're going to take public comments. We'll have sticky notes, we'll have maps, we'll have something saying, hey, where do you think a new park should go? We've already identified it fits within our plan. We've identified that we've gone plan, we've got the money, and it's gone through the committees and everything else. So we've gone to the open house. Now what?
One, one thing, when you have the open house, you're forgetting, how are you going to publicize that? How are you going to get people there?
Okay, we've got our outreach plan. What's part of our outreach plan? Open house. We have our, we've got Facebook. We have our website. We have, what else do we have?
Chamber.
Chamber. We've got the newspaper. We've got the newspaper. We have our, uh, community groups, right?
Yes.
Our community, oh, here's a good word. Our community stakeholders, right?
There you go.
All right. Community stakeholders. Got those groups. Okay. So we've got our outreach plan. What?
Nothing.
Did you make fun of my spelling?
No.
Because I didn't know I was spelling it up.
I can't even see it from here, so we're good.
Yeah, I can't see it.
And it goes into an open house as well. I agree. I think that this is good. Okay? Okay, out of all of this, we're all connected. Seeing all the staffs along the way. Where are we going? We've got all the information gathered.
Well...
What would... Go ahead, Mr. Fredericks. You seem a little nervous.
And you had an open house.
You've had your open house.
Yeah, we've had our community outreach. Got our open house. We've taken in all the information on a new park.
We got it all.
We've got it all. And we have all our information.
Well, it, yeah. Well, it depends on what you hear at the open house. You could hear from folks that are, you could have a majority of the folks that are there that are totally against the concept.
Okay.
And at that point, you have a choice. You can either push it through without the support of the folks at the open house.
Which we go straight to here.
Which, I've seen, not here, but I've seen that before. Or you can, uh, you can refer it back to the committee or council to workshop it.
Perhaps the people that are saying no, we say, okay, do you not want a park or you want one to park there? What are your, what, what? What is it that you want or don't want?
I think you've identified the challenge in getting anything done at the government level.
Right!
Okay, that was a great statement.
I'm just.
But here, how about this? Let me throw something out there. So if we've got all this information from the community, we've done everything we possibly could to put the outreach out there and get in front of folks and say, hey, this is what we're trying to do, do you agree with it or not? Give us your feedback. Do you agree with some of it, half of it, whatever, maybe?
Depends on the concept.
Okay.
Asterisk the concept.
But it would still be safe to say that it needs to go somewhere.
Right.
So it needs to go back to committee or it needs to come to council for a workshop. Depending on what the feedback is.
Or it may just go complete to council with her pass to get it done or not.
Well, you're jumping ahead though.
Okay.
Because I think that on our side of the table, we get pushback on doing it that way. Because we're like, well, why didn't we workshop this?
But we've already.
Didn't this go back to committee after all the information was gathered?
Okay, I disagree.
It all depends what they did again. This comes down to what the concept is.
Okay.
And I'll, and I'll, I'll agree with something on an action we previously took.
Okay.
I agree, I think Mr. Plaza said it best, he says, listen, you're spending existing money for a park.
Okay.
I, you know what, that makes sense. I don't think it has to go through that process. But when you're establishing a new park, I think that's a bigger, a bigger issue.
Okay.
And I've seen us do this, I've seen us have the concept and go directly to complete in a transportation benefit district, we've done it twice, where we've gone from concept to complete without any of the, any of the product, any of the in-between.
Okay.
And then we all sit back and go, oh gee.
Why didn't it pass?
Why didn't that pass?
Okay.
Well.
There was none of this.
There was none of that, there was no outreach, there was no open house, there was, there was none of that.
Okay.
So, again, I think it, the process is dependent upon.
The concept.
The concept.
Okay. Well, we're, we're creating a new park, focus on that right now.
Okay.
Where do you, where do you believe it should go? I'm hearing it should go back to committee, it should be workshop, it should go straight to council. Just three routes for a brand new park.
Well, after you get the feedback from the people that came to the open house, you would think you would have to have a workshop or send it back to maybe give way to approach the sounds of what they have to say.
Okay. So, I'm gonna create three boxes. So, what I'm hearing is that you're trusting staff to make an educated decision on what the next step should be after we've gone through all of this. That's what I'm hearing. Depending on what comes out of all of this, you're putting on staff's shoulders, which direction we should take.
No, I think he said, I think he said workshop, if I heard it correctly.
Yeah, I said workshop, workshop.
To study, you may have, there may have been a lot of people that showed up and you may have gotten a lot of testimony that, you know what? Your concept is not good, but we think you should do this. We want you to look, don't look at this, look at this.
So if that's the case, I would, I would expect that staff would take it back to committee.
Right.
And say, hey, this is what came of it, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna take it to council, do you wanna workshop?
Right.
But I'm also hearing, everybody showed up, now we just go straight to a workshop. You're allowing staff to make that decision on where it should go. Which route, what box it should go in, whether it be committee, workshop, or straight to council, or just.
So, I would not have a problem doing that, making that decision. However, if it came back to workshop and we went to committee and depending on the committee, they felt like, we need to talk about this more, there's some things that we don't like, yeah, so now.
So we need to kick it back.
Yeah. And do a workshop. I might just write their old hand.
There we go. Oh, it's red too.
Let me ask you this question. You go to open house and nobody shows up, then what?
Okay, well.
Then we do whatever we want.
Well, it goes back to, to Mr. Fredericks, it goes back to, did we check that box? Did we follow the map to check the box? How many opportunities has that community had to step forward before multiple people? We've done our outreach, we put it on Facebook, we put it on the website, we've reached out to our community stakeholders, they know what's coming. They know we have an open house and they don't show. They're gonna get another opportunity before we get to here. Instead of before council, because it will be at a public hearing or it'll be before council to step forward again. We're allowing them the opportunity to build a turkey sandwich. We started with our peanut butter and jelly. Mr. Fredericks, I just lost him.
No, I'm, I'm listening.
No, okay.
I was thinking peanut butter and jelly sounded not bad at this hour.
All right. Let's, let's say that with this new park, it's gonna go to a workshop. Out of the workshop, where should it go from there? We've done outreach, we've asked the community to help us decide.
So we've got phones and everything already lined up.
Yep, we've got our plan, we're gonna pay for it.
To council.
You're ready to go to council.
Okay.
Or, the council has the right to say, you know what, this is a really good concept. We need more information, we need to refer it back to, to committee.
It still has to go to council first, though.
Yeah, it has to go to council for the council to do that, right?
So, we're at a workshop, right, and we're gonna go over this way, and we're gonna take action, right? We're gonna take action at a meeting after a workshop. And during that time, it can be referred back to committee. And from committee, it's going to either go back for action. What?
Postpone indefinitely would be another option.
Right, but, hey, good, you got our, or, um, we just get it straight up now, and it stops. But if it goes to committee, I have a feeling we're gonna end up back here again. It's gonna, it's gonna rot back around somewhere. It's not gonna die here.
If it's gone to workshop, and its action should go to council for approval.
That, that, this would be council here.
Oh, that's council, okay.
Council action.
Okay.
So, during council meeting, someone can refer it back to committee, we don't have enough information, I wanna refer it back to another workshop, I want more community outreach, whatever it is that you direct staff to do.
Or we got all going on and it's done, to get it started.
And you say yes, and that's the, that's the train to yes. No. Is that fair, Mr. Fredericks?
Yeah.
Is that what you wanna see?
Yeah, I think it's. Just because we've done all the outreach and stuff doesn't mean people are gonna show up.
Absolutely, but we've still got another opportunity.
But at least, at least we have put forth and made it public for people to come if they want to.
And it's their choice not to come and give us their input.
But you're not gonna follow this process on every single concept.
No.
No, because if this was bleachers, it would have already been done and they're built. Ordered something.
Right, this would be, so we would refer to this going forward as, this isn't bleachers, we need to take this to another level.
Yeah, that's your teachers. This was the bleachers route.
Yeah.
Here was the bleachers route.
Yeah. Well, I kinda like that.
Yeah, me too. And the other one is the, is the park, is the new park.
Carl had a question, I think.
On this concept going that way, where, and we got open house, where does staff?
We're up here with the plan.
At the plan. Okay, that's where staff puts it.
They're gonna do the open house, they're gonna do the website, they're gonna do the notifications, newspaper, all that stuff, it's all on.
I just see staff, okay, so staff's where staff's at.
Okay, no, the, along the way, okay.
So the, so there may be others, there may be others that would debate, that would say, hey, on this new park, we don't need to take this to an open house, we don't need to do that.
Right.
We could skip that whole process and do exactly that, take it directly to council.
So it came to the plan, went back to committee, and now we're gonna straight to council.
Or it didn't even go to a committee. There may be some that are okay with doing that and they're, and that's where you have to debate, is that that first council, like, hey, now we need to take a look at this a little bit more before we send it off. You may have a majority that says, nope, we just need to get this done.
Right.
And I've seen that.
Well, and that comes out of the committee. So if it, so if it, the plan comes here, this would be a more extravagant new park, right? So maybe, okay, so maybe these committee members are like, hey, bring us the plan, what do you wanna do? You told us you want a new park, tell us how you're gonna pay for it and what's gonna happen, right?
Right.
And, and these two items might happen at the same meeting. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
So depending on what committee it is, they could say, okay, okay, send it to council, I think it looks good. Well, at that point.
Counsel will figure it back out, what?
That's up to you.
Right.
So we're, we're out of it at that point. So that's your opportunity to speak up and say, I don't agree with this. Now four members or five members of, of this body could say, well, we disagree with you, Mrs. Graham. We don't want to do the public outreach or the community, we're gonna take it straight to council. And it got passed, right? So at that point, did staff do everything that we were supposed to do? Did we do everything we were supposed to do on our side to give you the most information to make this decision? Right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd say so.
So, okay, I just wanna make sure that we're all the same.
Because you've done all of that in that middle box, who, what, where, why.
It was in the committee, it was on right there. Yes.
So certain, during this discussion, I've looked over to the members of staff and several of them were smiling. Are there any background conversations you wish to share with us that were going on in your head that you'd like to throw out here that'd be great?
Yes, I, I always have something to share. So, um, this probably came, came to me because of the things that I've been doing in the city. I'll, I'll share that.
You've been doing great.
Well, no, but, but at, at times, I believe it's been looked upon, I might not be following the process. So I will share that now. What I wanna share with when I listen to the mayor speak about this is, the items that I have always done here, I'm just gonna, this is just my own personal opinion, I've always taken it to my public works committee, everything I've done, and parks committee, which is both things that I want, and Horseshoe Lake.
Horseshoe Lake, yeah.
I want parks, Horseshoe Lake, and public works. I've taken everything I've done, I'm just sharing this, to public works committee and then to parks or Horseshoe Lake, depending on what.
Or both.
What it is. Or, or, or both, or all three. Um, so, but what I've, what I've brought forward and what I move forward with is something that's always been part of the city's comprehensive plan and part of Parks and Rec. So sometimes I believe, that I feel that the comprehensive plan of the Parks and Recreation is part of a 10-year plan that all the citizens of the city have agreed upon from day one. And now we're actually doing something about it, so why do we have to go through this process day in and day out?
Did I nearly just say, Ms. Coleman, that we've already done all the outreach and everything else?
It, it's been done because it's in the comprehensive's plan and the Parks and Rec plan, and it's been renewed year after year, and it's part of a 10-year plan. So I'm just, I just wanna share something. So you want, you wanna know kind of what I'm saying in the background, because a lot of times I hear, when has the public had a chance to talk about this? 10 years. They've had a chance to talk about it. 10 years it's in, in this Parks and Rec plan and, and, or bleachers have been removed because they've been, we'll say the bleachers, because they've been deteriorated. Guess what, we want new bleachers now. And so they've been in that plan, so we want to get new bleachers. But sometimes it's kicked back. And this isn't, this isn't because, this wasn't put up because of me, I think it was put up because, um, because people feel like sometimes maybe I don't follow the process. And maybe I don't, and I apologize for that. But at the same time, I wanna let you know that everything that I've done, I have gone through all the committees, it's been in all the reports for all the committees, and it's been part of comprehensive plan for the city as a whole and the Park and Recreation Plan for what I've been doing lately. We'll just leave it at that. And I'm talking about roads, but now when we're getting into roads, I'm saying, ooh, part of the plan, this TIP, it's not on there, that what we wanna do. So now let's get everything on there so we can move forward on that, so now we're doing the public outreach. So that's kinda, I just wanted to share what I see that we're doing within our department. And people say, well, we didn't get a chance to see it, nobody agrees with it, well, it was part of that plan from 10 years ago. And oh, by the way, it was taken off five years ago because we didn't have the funds, and guess what, now we have funds and we're putting it back on. So I'm just kinda saying, these things have gone on and off that I've noticed in our department. And so the mayor is like, Tracy, you need to slow down. And I'm like, I need a process, and so he put the process together for me, so I make sure that I follow it. That's.
Right, but I put it together for everybody, so we're all in the same area.
But, but for me.
Maybe for you, yes.
Anthony, Tracy's bleachers, Tracy's park, and so it's for me. So we'll just be on.
But as Mr., as Chief Jackson said during that meeting was, you know what, it's always a good refresher for all.
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Fredericks?
Well, certainly I don't think this has pointed anyone. I've been on this council for, I don't know how long you've been here. A long time. She's been here longer. And during that time that I've been here, I have seen things go without a process numerous times. And maybe it's because there is no established process internally. And so this is good that we're having this discussion on this. The thing that I might argue with on the comprehensive plan is that, yes, we do one every 10 years. But every time there's a land use matter in front of me, I have a proponent and a opponent that reads that comprehensive plan differently. And it allows both sides to have a discussion. If we say we're only gonna make a decision off of what we've had 10 years ago in that, in that thick document, and that we're never going to refine that to, if it says we need more parks, okay, what kind of parks? Uh, what does that look like? There's the debate that we're missing. We're missing that opportunity to reach out to the folks and say, hey, listen, everything that guides our decision is based upon this comprehensive plan. However, let's talk about the details of what that looks like. And that's, I think, what, what we need to have a discussion on and what the open house and the topics need to be, so we can say, here's what our comprehensive plan says, here's some concepts that we think are good, what do you think? And it give them the opportunity for that buy-in. Am I saying on everything, park benches for Garrick Park? No, I'm not. Those are existing funds that we've already established for park bench, or, um, park items that needed to be added. That's already a funding idea. That's what I'm talking about there. So I understand that the comprehensive plan guides the decision. It doesn't get down to the weeds level, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
Mr. Carter?
So, I see the comprehensive plan as kind of the north star, the guiding star that gives our direction for long-term decisions. My job is really kind of the day-to-day discussions, very much the same as Tracy and Chief. We basically make decisions on a day-to-day basis based upon what's in that particular application packet, but we always are looking out for that long-range, that guiding star to make sure we're pointing in the right direction. Tracy is, um, Tracy is good, especially as these things started coming, coming up and since I've been on board. We discuss these in the department's head meetings and have, try and have conversations and figure out, okay, is this a bleacher purchase because it's already in the budget or is this fence purchase for a new park which isn't necessarily in the budget but is kind of considered in the comprehensive plan? At what point, that's where you rely on us to use our professional judgment. What I wanna point out is that in each one of these diagrams, whether it's the one you did tonight or the one that we did previously, is those lines are not just nondescript actions that occur by email. Staff, whether it's Pete, whether it's Tracy, whether it's myself, we take the time to prepare that plan for the next step in the conversation so that when it gets to the committee, you have your options and you have your budget or you have your idea of what we understand, you asked us for, what we interpreted for this next statement, at which point at any time you can make this decision, okay? Now take it to the open house and do this and do the public notice. All of those things are done by staff so that we're consistently involving the proposal and the discussion as it goes along, so that by the time it gets to you with that in there when you get to the committee, you know, okay, we've had these open houses and we haven't ignored the 50% of the conversation that said we don't want this and just looking at the 50% that aggresses, then we will give you both sides of that argument so that the committee can decide, okay, this is not back out for me or does, or is it ready for the council to vote on and take action on. So from our point of view, you know, this is simple for us, once we kind of have your understanding of what you want to do, so that, you know, when we start introducing these concepts to you and we pull up this map of, hey, these are transportation ideas that we identified, is there anything else you want on this list? You understand that we're not at the end asking you to take action, you understand that, oh, okay, yeah, that's a great idea. Now take that out to the public to do this, so that it can come back to committee for action to come later on, so. That's kinda how I'm interpreting the conversation and what I heard from these various council council members tonight. Hopefully that sounds right.
Well, from my perspective, yes, but with Ms. Coleman not having a roadmap, I would have, I'd do the same thing. We're getting this done. I've got to, we're getting it done. So I get it. You know, and I was the one that kind of spoke out about, hey, you know, if I'm looking back and doing root cause analysis on the reason why I didn't support the dog park, was the fact that there was, there was no map. There was a map here at council, but there was no map in the packet for the folks to consider. I'm still not convinced the folks know where the dog park is going to go. The details of it, you know, that it's on a slant, what does that look like? Is that going to be graded? It just seems to me like it got pushed through. And the reason it got pushed through, because you had a valid concern, was we got to spend this money in any direction. So, but I'm okay with the fact that the council said, because in this instance, that's exactly what we did. We went from council, we skipped all the middle and went right to the end, in my mind. We did that. And that's, that's okay, too. It's just understanding that, hey, at that time, this, the board, the body said, we're not interested in that. You're on an island. I lost. I'm over it. We're going to get a dog park. That's, I'm fine with it.
Maybe.
Maybe. But, no, I appreciate this and I appreciate staff's input, because I think with going back and forth, I think it creates a better, better understanding of the process and it makes better policy in the end for the citizens, which I think we're all after.
I agree.
Well, I think historically, maybe this body hasn't had, or trust, maybe? I don't know. I'm just going to throw some trust out there, not only with staff, but even with the person that's sitting in the middle of the, of the.
That's true.
Ideas here. We are trying to skip all this to push through an agenda. Our agenda is the community. And when we identify something that we want, we just want to make sure that we do it right and that we're doing it to the needs of councils as well to make their decision. I know you're not always going to get that. I know you haven't always had that, but that's kind of where we are now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any member of staff or anybody who serves on this board that isn't doing it for the right reason. Has it always been like that? No.
Right. And maybe that's what's come from, but I think that, I think that Ms. Coleman brought up, or Mr. Goddard brought up a good point, is just because we're bringing it to, doesn't mean that we're asking you to skip all this. Because I brought stuff before council as well, and they say, hold on a second. This is what we're doing here. I'm just letting you know what we're planning to do, so when you hear it on the street, you're not blindsided by it.
But, but as he said, that's not always been the case.
Right.
So we tend to get a little gun shy sitting up here.
No, I get it.
And because I sit on all those committees with Tracy and I watch how she's doing things and I, I have more of a one-on-one with her because I'm sitting on a committee and where she got the information and who she's talked to, I'm really comfortable with what she puts out there. And I, as our staff grows and I am more familiar with them, and I think everybody up here feels that way, it's like, yeah, okay, you're not, you're not asking us to do this. You're not just saying, oh, blindly, she's saying yes because we're saying, they got, they did their homework. And that's a good feeling, because for me it is.
What I've noticed is Ms. Coleman seems to be the executor on the team. If you want something done, she's the person that you get.
Not a teacher.
You get her on the phone and she'll get it done. I mean, that's, that's my perception of what is going on. And so if I were someone from the outside looking in, I would identify Ms. Coleman as someone who I could contact and get it done if I wanted. She'd at least tell me why it couldn't get done.
I think she'd do a great job.
And I appreciate that.
Same with Travis. I'm just saying, because of Travis, does he find the money?
It's all part of the, it's part of the teamwork.
It's the team.
TNT. TNT.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I think this has been a good discussion. Do we need this? Does council need this? We have our, we have our roadmap internally. You have, we're using now.
I would love to see this diagram improved.
With more detail.
Maybe some, a little bit of verbiage on what that means, each section of that means, and then have it back in our notes, so I can refer to it later.
Absolutely.
No. It's all on camera. Just look, just look back at the video. So, okay, let me ask you this, so we don't leave something hanging here. So we got it out of workshop, we got it up to committee, do we need to continue this process or are you guys good with this? And you just want more detail on what this looks like to you? Because what I'm hearing, too, is that there's, there's simple things. And I think that staff and myself understand what simple things are. But I think that we also are, we can identify something that's going to cause some red flags or additional questions, and we might want to be more prepared here in having that back and forth with the committee and possibly going into more outreach.
Yeah, I would like to, I mean, not to be picky, but I would like to see the flowchart flow to each, like it should, and then down. So it's on, this is.
Well, you should have saw.
Then we go over here.
You should have saw the process unfold. Just saw the process unfold.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure it created quite the discussion.
Is there any, is there any steps that we're missing in here? We do the outreach and we get it up to, and we get it to the complete stage. What are we missing?
I haven't thought of that yet.
I'm sure you will when we bring you something forward.
Well.
That is a possibility. You know, when it, when it's, when it's handed to us on a piece of paper that we can look at, that's not, you know, and this is what this is and this is where this is going and this is, it may, we bring forth something that we want, oh, we need to add this or...
I just hope you don't, this is going to come back to bite you. Hold on a second. You skipped steps four and five.
If it makes sense and it's all drawn out, if, for certain projects or certain concepts that could be incorporated into the rules, and then just, this is the process that you take. We've established this as the policy that staff will take in when there are concepts and things that we're going to deal with. This is how staff will handle it.
I guess, I guess my whole point of this exercise is to make sure that council has some skin to paint a little bit. That's all. We're trying, we're trying in our sense to satisfy the needs. And to hear you say that this is really important to you when it comes to maybe getting down into the weeds of the, of the comprehensive plan, maybe we need to identify that internally versus say, well, it's like part of the plan is we need to get down, we need to get down.
Well, it comes in a correct sense, too. I mean, like you said earlier, not everything needs to come down to open.
Exactly.
You know, so obviously, you know, the stuff that does, and yeah, we need to do that, but the stuff that didn't burn through, then we don't need to tie up eight months of talking in order to get a park made.
See, so an example of that, though, is if we were going to cut down 12 trees, there may be some on the council that are supportive of, you know what? That's council action. We can take it. We don't have to go through an open house. You may have, maybe, I'm sensitive to that. And I don't, because I, my phone has rung off the hook when we cut down some trees along Orshoe Lake. I've got a lot of phone calls on that. I may want to say, no, I really think we got to let folks know what's going on, why we're doing it, what the reason is. You may, so we may have disagreement on where it goes, where, what, what turn, where does this stop at? I'm just throwing that out there as an example.
But isn't that something that should be discussed at the committee level?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Do you sit on public works?
I don't.
Okay. So at what point, so at what point do you, do you get the opportunity to say, hold on a second, I want to discuss this in an open meeting, and this is no longer, this should be a council policy, or council should have a voice versus just allowing for general maintenance?
Well, I would, I would say we do have those types of issues that come before the finance committee, that have come many times before, where we're not comfortable making a recommendation. We may refer to a workshop or request a workshop out of committee for the council to, to give us direction.
But if nobody does, and you're sensitive to it, how, how.
So for public works committees?
You might find out at the first council meeting, that, that there's the sensitivity. Ooh, we didn't realize that, because we didn't ask. Sometimes, too, things go through committee and you can tell they've gone through committee without much debate, because when they get here, it ends up in a, well, what about this? Why are we doing it this? And then it ends up in a, well, wow, we didn't look at that.
Okay. And then, and then what happens? It goes right back.
Depends on if I can get real people to support me.
Well, I just feel like we bring, we, we talk about what happened in our meeting. If there's something that someone isn't comfortable with, they need to say so at that time. We can take it back to a workshop, we can talk about it more, we can do whatever makes everybody comfortable. But I think that we're all pretty aware of what makes everybody comfortable, including our citizens. And so when we talk about things in committee, we say, oh, you know what? We need to take this out. This needs to have some, go to the council, or this needs to go to the public, or. And those things didn't always happen, but they do now.
I think that ebbs and flows with who's sitting in the seat, in, in the seat. You can have someone who's supportive in a kind of a team effort, or you could have somebody who is, somebody who is not.
Somebody's character thrown, that's okay.
Somebody who is a control freak.
Okay? All right.
Yes, like that.
Okay. Well, this completes our exercise. Thank you. I think that we, I think that we're all kind of on the same page, even though we didn't complete the flowchart, but, you know, we'll take ours. You gave us some information at the beginning of that. No, we didn't complete it all the way. There were still some other boxes, but that's okay. But I, I think, I think we've got the concept and the understanding of, we need to do more on the, on the first part of our flowcharts and maybe it's a little bit easier to read and bring that back to council, see if that's really what you guys want.
So then the takeaway is this is going to go back and be fine with a little bit more.
Yeah, we'll enhance it a little bit, especially when we look at some of these other things that maybe has few different directions. Yeah, absolutely. We'll discuss it.
And I think it's, I don't know, maybe going off of what Councilman Plaza said, I don't have any issue, I think that there's, there can be debate about what type of outreach you want to do, if any. If there's a group on the board that feels like it's important enough to say, hey, I think we need to do outreach here, and some that are like, no, we need to get this done. I'm okay with that debate.
That's on you guys, though.
It is. But I think that that's a healthy discussion, rather than not having the discussion at all, and then, then get to the end and have it shot down because of the process. And sometimes I'll do that. You know, people say, well, Fredrick, you don't like parks. No, I don't like the process. So, you know, I've done that before and that's okay. But having a seven-member board, the idea of having that is you get seven different ideas, along with staff's input, the mayor, to create the best policy for folks. And I think that that's, that's what makes this work. You know, weird, this all works, believe it or not. Maybe not as quick as we'd like to sometimes. I've had projects languish for, I had a proposal that languished for nearly two years before it was finally brought to council for consideration. And so it sometimes bothers me when, wow, that just went right through. Why couldn't I get mine through?
We'll have that conversation later.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Well, thank you for indulging me with that. I think that it helps, I think it helps us as well at our side of the table. So thank you for participating. We have one more item for discussion this evening, possible ballot measures. And Ms. Rip, attach the calendar, which is up on the screen now, on when things are due. So I wanted to have this discussion this evening, just because that timeline is ticking. Some of the priorities or some, a lot of discussions obviously center around transportation and center around police funding and how we're going to do it. We always come back to those two things. So I would like to have that discussion. And if council wants further action taken on that or research brought forward, because our calendar is ticking, is council interested in attaching any ballot measures in 2018? Or is there a different priority or asking to vote us for anything else?
So can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
It sounds like we've identified a concept and now we're skipping directly to, give me direction on, not, no, just give me direction on the concept, when we haven't done any of the process to get to the, to the completion. So we're, we're now under the gun.
We're not under the gun yet. Okay, I'll let you finish. I'll let you finish.
I wouldn't say we're under the gun, but we've done, if we were going to bring something forward, let's talk about the process, let's talk about the timeline, let's talk about the competing interests of staff, let's talk about all those things and really ask ourselves, do we have the ability to get anything accomplished between now and the time that this would be brought forward for consideration? I just don't think we do. And if someone could persuade me as to, oh, yes, Councilmember Frederick, we certainly could put together an effort for fill-in-the-blank funding for...
I guess, I'm going to stop right there for a second. So I guess I'm at the point of, hey, there's this thing that's out there, do you want to proceed? Do you want us to put the time into coming up with that process and that concept? We know that we've identified things within our city that need attention and that we can go and find funding for. I'm asking if council is engaged with that, or we've tried twice already, it hasn't worked out, and maybe we need to come up with a different plan? Or is this part of the discussion that council wants to move forward with in finding those dollars?
Just to pipe in here real quick, the license plate fee, I would never vote for that. So we can just take that off the table, at least in my opinion. We can take that off the table right off the bat. The 2% sales tax, I think the reason why that had failed so much in the past is because there wasn't enough outreach and education for the, you know, the folks to really get a grip. All they saw was another tax that the city was trying to hammer down on top of their head.
Okay.
So, you know, in order to fund some of these stuff, I'd be okay with that, as long as there was a kind of educational outreach thing, so that people knew what, what they are actually voting for. As far as police department funding, obviously, we need to find some money for that somewhere, but is there a plan in place of where to magically pull that money out of, or what? Because you can't really proceed without some kind of game plan, right?
Right. So, and that's, and that's the question. And that's the question. Do you want a game plan? Or do you believe the voters, or do you believe what the voters in the community have spoken already the last couple of years?
Can we make a request with, are you able to pull up, Ms. Rip, the priorities that were established during the council retreat this year through the minutes?
I have, I didn't bring any, I'm sorry.
Because I, I just.
It was police and transportation, wasn't it?
I don't remember. I've logged for it before.
And I thought transportation was one of the priorities.
I feel that, that was still the great amount on how that was going to get the date for, you know, and what other options that we have to look at in that area.
But also, I think this past year, the reason why some didn't pass is because we had too many other ones out there trying to pass. You know, you had, I don't know if the school had some, but you had the pool, you had the city, seems like there was something else out there, too.
We had four on there.
Yeah.
The only thing that passed was mosquito, that's right.
I thought it was police and transportation as well.
I thought so. It was February's when we got there.
Oh, it was February because you were on vacation. It was like February.
No, I was back.
You were back, but it was like February.
Yes, it was. The 10th of February was when it was.
It was the 10th.
But we're going to get the budget time and have all these things to do.
I think, if memory serves me correctly, it was police and transportation. I know staff has spent a considerable amount of time on number two, transportation.
We have. And we've been, and I've been working with the chief and Mr. Boyce has been working with the chief, trying to be creative on how we're going to find dollars. And it's hard. And it's hard.
And how, how much are we?
We've already, I guess here's, here's the thing. We've already done the work. We've done the work over the last couple of years. We, we know what is identified as the funding source. I think what you're lacking from the questions or what you were just stating is that you're lacking the plan. How are we going to execute to get to the funding with the voters? Or, or get the information at least to the voters, so that they can make an educated decision? I guess that's the question tonight, then. Do you want a plan? Does council want to move forward? Or do you think that they're voter fatigue at this time?
It would depend on what it was.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay. That's fair enough.
I think that there's enough support for needs within the community or the police department that that's what we're going to revisit.
Okay.
As far as the transportation stuff, like I said, nobody's going to be wanting to pay an extra $20 to $40 or whatever for their license plate. So that's dead in the water to begin with. But I think the other options, I mean, yeah, it won't hurt to look at it. And, you know, if we can have.
But are you going to run two things on there? That would be two things, right?
Right now, yeah.
Well, we can have that discussion once we bring the plan forward.
I think it'd be, I think it would be appropriate. I don't think you could end up doing an appropriate outreach plan on transportation in the time that's left. That's going to be a longer.
That's just, that timeline for August is just to get it.
Well, that's to get it filed.
That's just to get it filed. We have until November. We still have six months, seven months. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I added all the way to the end of the year.
July, June?
Yeah, June, July, August, September. We've got four months to do the education and outreach.
If we're going to do education and outreach, what does that calendar look like? What's the plan? Who's going to be the champion of it at City Hall? Who's going to champion it?
Okay. This is what I'm looking for.
Well, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm only one member, so just because I'm talking doesn't mean anything. Yeah, that's what it should look like. The calendar of what needs to be done, who's going to do it, what council members are going to join, who are we taking it to? Chamber, the, anybody you can think of, anybody who will listen. Open houses. Rotary, open houses.
Maybe, I don't know.
Press release, saying, hey, we're having this open house. We want to hear from folks. Can you do an effective open house, public engagement process between now and when we have to do everything? That's the question. And I'm not an expert at, and I'm already seeing one staff member go, I don't think you can do it. I don't either.
Okay.
But maybe somebody else thinks that we can.
Well, I think a lot of the base work has already been done or the foundation's been put down. We just need to come up with. We just need to come up with.
Can we, is anybody else running something? Have we communicated with other agencies? School, uh, the, um, the swimming district? Do we have anything that's going to, oh, hey, look, this is going to be on there? We didn't know because we didn't talk to other agencies. What about a plan to say, we're not going to do it this time? February, what does February look like? What are the election costs associated with November versus February? Is it better to run it next year and create a long-term plan that says, we're going to do this with the plan being in November of 2019? Here's the plan we're going to take. Here's the process that we're going to take in between now and then and then work the Maybe that's a better approach. I don't know. I look for, I look for folks like Mr. Goddard who are, I believe, somewhat of an expert in understanding the public participation process better than I do. Because I don't. I, I know enough to be dangerous, but.
You know, you, they're probably not very happy right now, but even now that the, uh...
369 Gun Club?
Yeah, the senior park out there too, that they have a community room, you could have a community meeting there too, so, you know, but.
I think that as we start following our own ideas and start having, tell us what you want, we're going to have more people. So, for the Six Rivers Bike Trail, we did chamber and then we did the park board and then we did a open house and we had 10 people here. It doesn't sound like much, but that's a whole lot more than we would have gotten probably a year ago even. So, I think that as people realize that we really do care, we're interested and we have these meetings and they hear what they've said, they're going to start participating.
My local HOA had 15 members participating, uh, the other night. So, taking it to community groups like Hillshire 2, 369 Gun Club, I think that's a fantastic idea. Take it to them.
Okay.
But it's got to be an effective plan with an effective timeline that says, this is what we think we can do and it'll be effective because there's no sense in doing something that's only going to be ineffective.
Okay.
In a short, and again, and we all scratch our heads, well, why didn't that work? We can do our own root cause analysis to determine what we could have done differently.
Okay. All right. That's all I needed to take back, thanks. Anything else, if you have the order, I guess, for this workshop?
Anything that staff wants to add.
Anything that staff would like to add for the workshop?
Yeah, I'd just add real quickly that the, the other big cloud that's looming over my work plan and that is updating the comprehensive plan. So, a lot of these issues I think will, we'll be having a conversation and then it'll be coming to you about updating the comprehensive plan. And by the time that's done, assuming that we can get that done by January, February of next year, you will have a much better idea as to, well, leading up to that, you'll have an opportunity to throw at issues onto that plate that you want part of that discussion. So, by January, February, you'll be able to make a decision on updating the comprehensive plan, which should make some of these other conversations a little bit easier.